Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for October the 28th, 2024. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the role of the members?
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Rachel Holtein.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Dan Larson. I believe he will be joining us on Zoom here shortly. Janice Hoppy. And Leah Dozeman. Both absent.
Thank you. Pardon me. Councillors, in your packets tonight, we have study session notes for October 7, 2024, City Council meeting minutes of October 14, 2024, special study session notes for October 14, 2024, and special study notes from October 21, 2024. Are there any corrections or changes to be noted in the minutes? Hearing none, we will let the minutes stand approved as submitted, and our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we will move with the agenda as prepared, and we have a couple of proclamations tonight. For our first proclamation, I'd like to invite Marissa Rivera to join me at the podium. Good evening, how are you tonight? Thank you for joining us. I'm pleased to make a proclamation in support of National Native American Heritage Month, November 2024. Whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous people and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of our country. And whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas, our country is blessed by the character and strength exemplified by the Native Americans who have answered the call of service in our armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. And whereas, the Land Acknowledgement Committee in the city of Wheat Ridge is working to acknowledge and honor indigenous people who have lived and worked on the land we call home. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is committed to developing and maintaining relationships with tribal communities. And whereas, during the month of November, we honor our native people in this area, their ancestral homes, and recognize their continued contributions in strengthening the diversity of our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, and the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Wheat Ridge, and encourage all residents to join in this observance and celebration. Day to this 28th day of October, 2024, I'd like to present this to you. Would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for having me here. I think that these type of proclamations are important. And when we think about Native American people, a lot of times we're thinking that the hardships and the things that happened to them by colonizers was something that happened a long time ago. But my mother's generation, many of them were still taken and put into boarding schools, and even younger than my mother's generation that was happening. And as we were starting to see in the news, all of the horrors that happened in those places had a deep effect on our community, on all of our people. And everywhere that we live feels the ripple of that effect. And I think it's so important to have this type of recognition. But I think it's important for reconciliation because as a country which should still be moving towards reconciliation with Native American people, because a lot of those things are still happening, and those things that we have to go through, we're still trying to get our culture back and our foods back. And so, something that I'm really thankful for and why I love Wheat Ridge so much is because you guys have taken action. Instead of just saying this proclamation, which is a great thing to say, but it's even better to have action behind your words. And by allowing you, or by allowing me to grow inside Happiness Gardens and have those market plots, and growing traditional foods means more than I can put into words. I have a special potato, and it's called the Four Corners Potato, you can look it up. This potato is a very rare potato, and it's a traditional food. It is the only potato that is indigenous to North America. And at one point, they thought that it was gone, and they did an archaeological dig and were able to find a live plant of this. And I was able to receive this potato through that university that did that dig. And so, these are what we're prepping the land for out there, is to bring these potatoes back. Her magical potato, you know, four times the protein of regular potatoes, they have three times the nutrient content, they can last for decades in the ground through drought, they're resistant to potato blight, potato beetles. And that's just these potatoes. There are so many other plants out there that we would eat and use that are not commercially available, and they're not accessible for people in my community. And that is why I do what I do, to make that accessible, to bring these foods to us, to make our food system more climate change friendly. Because a lot of these foods that I'm talking about can grow in desertous regions without irrigation. And we all live in Colorado, so we know the issues with irrigation and what we're going through with our water. So, having, I want to make an example of Happiness Gardens, of how to use the least amount of water as possible while producing some of the best produce that you can produce. And you guys have given me that opportunity, and I've brought so many people to come and learn from my community and from everywhere. And it's going to be a really beautiful place to heal for us. So I'm thankful for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to invite Commander Keith Weimer to the podium to join me for the next presentation, and I want to say a personal congratulations to Commander Weimer for his recent promotion. This is a proclamation in support of National Veterans and Military Families Month. Whereas during National Veterans and Military Families Month, we salute the brave and dedicated patriots who have worn the uniform of the United States, and we celebrate the extraordinary military families whose selfless service and sacrifice make our military the finest in the world. And whereas, our nation's veterans represent the best of America. Generation after generation, men and women have answered the call to defend our country and our freedom, facing danger and uncertainty with uncommon courage. And whereas, our heroes have always relied on their families for strength and support, serving alongside our men and women in uniform, our spouses, siblings, parents, and children who personally, who personify the ideals of patriotism, pride, resilience, service above self, and honor. And whereas, as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, we send our gratitude to millions of service members, veteran military families, caregivers, and survivors who have served and who continue to serve our nation. And whereas, it is not only the person who wears the uniform serving our country, but also their families who make enormous sacrifices for our nation. And whereas, we honor them and their invaluable contributions. We share pride in our armed forces, and we will never forget what they and their loved ones do for us. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as National Veterans and Military Families Month. Throughout November, a grateful nation in the city of Wheat Ridge can show appreciation to the spouses, partners, children, caregivers, and survivors of our service members and veterans of their selfless sacrifice on behalf of our nation. Thank you. This is for you, and would you like to say a few words? Really brief, really, really brief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the women and men of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for this proclamation. It was an honor to serve our nation and as a member of the armed forces, just as it was an honor, is an honor to serve and continue to serve this community as a police officer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now, pardon me. We are now at our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come and address the council. You'll have three minutes to address the council. When I call your name, if you please come to the podium and introduce yourself, give us your first name and your last name, and tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge. And our first speaker is Brett Paisleyer. Sorry if I didn't get that name right, but I know you're gonna, you're gonna, you know it, and you'll tell me about it.
Hello, my name is Brett Paglieri, or Pallieri, either is acceptable, and I am not a resident of Wheat Ridge, although I live very close to Wheat Ridge. Hello, I am running to represent Wheat Ridge on the RTD's Board of Directors. We are currently in District M, which is, also includes Edgewater, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Golden. I'm here today to say hi, share why I'm running, and tell you about my experience and how I can help shift RTD from an agency of stagnation to an agency of growth and hopefully represent Wheat Ridge well in doing so. I ride transit frequently, I enjoy the option and freedom of not having to take my car, I feel like I win my time back by not sitting in traffic or sitting behind a wheel, plus it's a lot less stressful. I'm running to make, I'm running for RTD to make it safer, first and foremost, as I've seen firsthand how poor the rider experience is, and I believe that no rider should ever feel unsafe while riding the system. We are incredibly lucky to have such an amazing system that runs more efficiently than systems across the country. RTD is, for better for worse, run very well, very efficiently, but that doesn't mean we have to accept mediocrity. Along with being a regular rider, I have a background in building customer experiences that I believe enables me to have a better perspective of how to improve the rider experience and make the ride more enjoyable. I'm proud to have Governor Jared Polis's endorsement, Conservation Colorado's endorsement, Greater Denver Transit endorsements, and other members of the community standing behind me, supporting me, aligned with the ideas and execution to make RTD safer. Myself and seven other candidates for the RTD races have signed a pledge at fixrtd.com, where you can see our commitment to deliver quality end-to-end, safety you can feel, and a schedule we can actually deliver. If anyone's ever had the bus not show up, they can really relate to that. Finally, I'm most proud to represent the next generation of Wheat Ridge. I confidently stand up here today being someone who was born in Wheat Ridge, and now I'm back. I've lived in West Metro Denver my entire life, Arvada in Denver as well. And I look forward to being a leader who has a better vision for our community. Read that as I don't want Colorado to become California. So I really care about our air quality, I don't want to be like California with their limitless traffic, their endless sprawl, and their lack of open spaces. So if you and your constituents, or if anybody in the room, or anyone who rides transit ever has problems with RTD, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. If I win my election and I'm on the board of RTD, I will make it my personal duty to respond to everyone and make sure that I have heard everyone's voices to make transit better. And don't forget, please vote yes on 7A. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate you joining us. I have no one else signed up to speak on this, so I'm gonna move the podium and then we'll be ready. Too easy to move. Okay, this brings us to our first agenda item, this is our consent agenda. Councillor Weaver, would you please introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor, I will. I will introduce items 1A through 1C. And I just want everyone to appreciate the amount of paper and stuff that goes into these consent agenda. I think I found the word slurry written about, I don't know, 25 times or something. So I'm gonna make it a little bit shorter up here. Our first consent agenda item, which is 1A, is a motion to award the Young Field Bridge scour repair project to West Fork Construction LLC of Colorado Springs, Colorado, and approve subsequent payments in the amount of $149,725, excuse me, with a contingency amount of $14,975 for a total not to exceed the amount of $164,700. At issue, the base of the piers for the Young Field Bridge over Clear Creek have been exposed due to erosion from high water flows. This project will remove some material and then add large boulders to the project to protect the area around the base of the piers from future erosion. Five bids were received and opened on September 25th, 2024. Staff recommends the lowest responsive bidder, West Fork Construction LLC of Colorado Springs. Colorado, Colorado Springs, Colorado will be awarded the contract in the amount of $149,725 plus a contingency of $14,975 for a total project cost of $164,700. Consent agenda item 1B is a motion to approve a contract amendment with A1 Chip Seal Company for the 2024 asphalt crack seal project in the amount of $87,242 with a contingency amount of $6,725 for a total not to exceed the amount of $93,967. Not $68. The city periodically performs asphalt crack sealing as a part of the annual preventative maintenance program to help maintain pavement condition and prevent more costly pavement repairs. Zone one of the city's six maintenance zones was inspected by city staff, various street segments with significant cracking were identified for the inclusion in the proposal, in the proposed contract to receive a crack sealing treatment. Item number 1C of the consent agenda is a motion to approve a contract with and subsequent payments to Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated for construction of the Hayward Park Walking Trail project in the amount of $238,259 with a contingency of $16,678 for a total not to exceed the amount of $254,937. The Hayward Park Walking Trail has deteriorated over time, creating an uneven surface with large cracks, resulting in safety concerns for trail users. The city received grant funding from the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program to fund a portion of this trail replacement project. Approval of this contract will allow the city to complete this important work. These are consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items number 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
I have five As, no Nays, motion carries.
Looks like we have two, or we have six.
Six.
Six Ys.
No Nays, motion carries.
Thank you, and I would like for the record to welcome Councillor Larson, who has joined us online. Thank you. Okay. So with that, we will go to agenda item number two. Mayor Protim Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 21-2024, An Ordinance Amending Relevant Sections of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law, Laws Concerning the City's General Business License requirements. At issue, the ordinance makes several amendments to the Wheat Ridge, or to the city's business licensing code. These changes are designed to ensure compliance with the state legislation, transition to biannual business license renewals, introduce an inspection fee, and consolidates certain special licenses with regular business licenses.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading, it is a public hearing, it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, we have a verbal presentation from Cole Haslip this evening, and Ally and Mark Colvin, our finance manager, here to answer any questions. Mr. Haslip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to give a presentation on the second reading of this business licensing ordinance. I'll just go through a summary of the ordinance and what it does real quickly, and then I'd like to address some of the questions that council had last time we discussed this issue in study session. But to begin with, this ordinance amends the code so that economic nexus businesses, which are businesses that sell in Wheat Ridge but aren't located in Wheat Ridge, they'll have to obtain a remote seller information form from now on rather than a business license. This also allows staff to implement biannual business licensing. It creates a business license inspection fee, which will be used to cover the cost of providing that inspection to the business, and this fee will be set, excuse me, by council during the budget adoption. It also removes late fees from the code, thereby allowing council to establish an increased fee schedule during budget adoption, and it consolidates essential special licenses with business licenses, thereby streamlining the licensing process for staff and businesses. We did have a few questions from council at the last study session, and I'd just like to address those. One of those was can the city offer licenses of different lengths, like a one-year license, two-year, three-year, at the same time? We looked into this with our software provider, GovOS, and unfortunately, the software does not allow us to do that without a large amount of manual work, so much so that it would be kind of counterintuitive with the effort we're going forward to implement the new software in the first place to reduce staff's workload. Therefore, we're recommending against it. Another question was, could we remove the $200 penalty, excuse me, from April 1st to May 1st? And the idea here was to align it with the tax filing schedule more closely. We took a look again at this, and we're ultimately recommending against it because we believe it would increase staff's workload and it wouldn't improve compliance. Looking at the number of businesses that submitted their license renewal from April to May, it was really a small fraction. And considering that by the time we get to April 1st, we've already notified the business that they need to renew several times, and with GovOS, they'll be notified that they need to renew even more frequently. We feel like it wouldn't address the issue, which is delinquent businesses as a whole. We don't feel like giving them another month of reminder would really increase compliance, but it would increase staff's workload. And then finally, the last question was about food truck licensing and the compliance that we receive from food trucks. And firstly, I'd like to confirm that food trucks, food trucks are considered a physical nexus business, therefore they are required to obtain a business license rather than a remote seller information form. And secondly, after speaking with our code enforcement, we're happy to report that we've been closely monitoring food trucks and and the vast majority of them are in compliance with the city code. And moving forward, we're going to continue to monitor those food trucks to ensure that they comply with city code, just like our storefront businesses do. That concludes staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. But for now, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. I have no members of the public that have signed up to speak on this item, so I will go to questions from council. Councilor Weaver.
I just had a quick question, only because it came up this last week with a constituent. So this is, will all licenses go to a similar time renewal as well? Specifically, it was about the short-term rental licenses. And so if it, will they all be renewed at the same time, or are they all staggered?
Not all city licenses will be renewed at the same time. So we have some special licenses, and short-term rental may be one of them, where they renew on an annual calendar basis. That'll continue to be the case, but our business licenses will always expire at the end of each year, or since we're moving to two years every other year.
Okay, so just for my own edification, just to clarify, short-term rentals are not once a year. They are per whenever the person put that applicant.
Rolling calendar.
The anniversary date. Thank you. Okay.
So one year from when you got it.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions at council before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Hearing now, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mayor Protem, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 21-2024, An Ordinance Amending Relevant Sections of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the City's General Business Licensing Requirements. On second reading, order it published, and then it takes effect 15 days after final publications as provided by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? I don't see any hands going up. So would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number 3. Councilor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to. This is Council Bill Number 22-2024, An Ordinance Adopting a New Article, Article 6 in Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Automated Vehicle Identification Systems. Traffic issues primarily excessive speeds and red light violations are a continual complaint from the public. Residents contact various departments, primarily the police department, to request speed and other traffic enforcement on their streets to address the increased hazards these violations tend to create. Wheat Ridge is a smaller community impacted by major roadways and highways often used by community members and non-community members alike. This volume of traffic makes it difficult for an agency size to serve the community of residents and businesses to adequately meet the demands of traffic control and safety. The use of technology in law enforcement continues to be one of the more impactful changes to modern-day policing. One of these innovative technologies that is expanding nationwide is the use of Automated Vehicle Identification Systems, or Avis. Staff is requesting city council to adopt a new Article 6 in Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to allow for use of Avis in Wheat Ridge to address these traffic concerns.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, and it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do, Mr. Mayor, and also just logistically, we do have another item after this, a motion to approve a service agreement with the company that will be providing this service. We're going to have one presentation though this evening, which I will turn it over to Chief Murtha to start that out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Come before you again to discuss the, not only the ordinance, but the agreement that we would like to enter into regarding the Avis system. As you know, we brought this before a study session. Subsequently, this project moved forward. I know it feels like it's been a long time in coming, because it has, however, to do our due diligence to make sure that we didn't make the mistakes of those around us. We were very diligent in reaching out to those other agencies, making sure that we went through our legal processes. And tonight, Division Chief Kellogg, who has been the point person on this, been in communication with not just the company that we believe is the best suited for the city of Wheat Ridge, but also with our surrounding jurisdictions and their experience with other companies and with the use of this technology to make our streets safer. He has been that point person, and he's going to discuss this with you a little further in a quick PowerPoint presentation.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me back, and thank you for engaging in this conversation with me. I appreciate your time today. As the chief noted, we have been looking at a variety of different technologies to actually move forward and assist with some of the increasing traffic issues that we've had. And so as the chief noted, the two requests that I have tonight is for approval of the service agreement with the company that I'll outline for you here momentarily, and then also the approval of the ordinance in the second reading moving forward. As we started looking at this, I took into account the primary goals that had been articulated to me from so many citizens and several of the members of city council. And those goals were that traffic safety is an imperative. It's paramount. And that the roadway users align with our core values. And we wanted to make sure that we were addressing those driving habits of the citizens and non-citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge that caused those unsafe conditions for other motorists, but also for other pedestrians and bicyclists, and I even saw horses on 32nd the other day, which I kind of appreciated. So we wanted to make sure that we looked at those goals and did the best we could to make this community what I think we vision it to be and to do the right thing for those people that we serve. What we've done to this date, what we've moved forward in a way to address those concerns and those things, and to provide the safety and the security that I think that this city deserves, is that we started back in 2022 with a purchase of the two black boxes, the data collection boxes, that we've talked about and I used in the presentation back in April. And we use those to deploy our traffic officers and our patrol officers in as productive a manner as is possible. We also went ahead and we fully staffed our traffic team. We were able to do that mostly because of the chief's recruitment plan and his way of doing business, and we have been able to fully staff that team. As of June, we've been fully staffed, and we are, and I think we have, been able to make an impact on those areas of concern. And the last thing we did was, we put a very experienced sergeant in that traffic supervisory role. He's an individual who had several years of experience prior to becoming a sergeant as a traffic officer, and now he has taken over the supervision of that traffic team and utilizes the industry standards, the current industry standards to address most of, as many of the traffic issues that we're dealing with on a regular basis. As we evaluated this, so the question that came to us was, is this enough? Is this enough to serve the community the way that they deserve to be served? And so in April of 2024, I came and spoke with this group with the city council then and received approval to look further at Avis technology, which we want to leverage to further address some of these traffic challenges that we're having. The research yielded a couple, I should say, some of the things that we wanted to make sure we, some of the parameters of the research, I suppose, is, one, we wanted to make sure that this, whatever we came up with, is this technology going to be a resource multiplier, or is it going to be a resource drain? And we asked that question predominantly because we spoke quite a bit with some of our partners in the Denver metro area, who I don't think implemented this technology in as productive and efficient a manner as is possible, and unfortunately are experiencing some of the challenges that can be, and then that it can cause as a resource drain. The other thing that we wanted to make sure that it did was educate our motorists using the programming about what our, what our, what our belief systems are here, what our core values are, what our expectations are of those citizens and non-citizens. If you choose to come and utilize the roadways of Wheat Ridge, we want you to have an understanding of what our expectations are. And the last few things that we considered as we researched these different companies are their tenure. How long have they been doing this? Their customer service record, because the last thing we need to be doing is continually having to hold someone accountable to the agreement that they've made with us. And then we wanted a company, we wanted to be able to put a product in place that was comprehensive. And I believe that we've actually found that system. We looked at several companies. We looked at these 10 companies. I'm not going to list them all for you. But we looked at all 10 of these, did extensive research, and in some cases spoke with representatives of each of these companies. And what we found is each offer essentially similar services. But what I will say is there was one that stood out as offering comprehensive services. There were nine of these 10 offered a semblance of what we got, but didn't offer everything. Only one of these companies offered everything. It's a turnkey type of product. We also looked at some other research that we did. We looked at purchasing our own hardware and exploring external software options. And then when we considered that, we spoke with some of those other Denver metro area organizations that employed this technology in the same way and are having some of the experiences of a massive resource drain. It has not addressed the problems that they're trying to address, and in fact, has caused manpower issues and, quite frankly, financial challenges as well. The company that we selected to move forward, to move the contract forward with to you is the Ultimate Incorporated Company. They are, and they've been an Avis provider since 2005, and they started, they were one of the companies that actually took the technology from NASA. This technology comes from NASA, and they have married it to some other technologies that make them able to do these types of speed management and red light management types of operations. As I said earlier, it's turnkey. It's essentially plug-and-play. It is completely violator-funded, and the data suggests that we can expect a reduction in unsafe speed-associated driving behaviors of between 30 and 60% in that first 12 months. One of the really interesting things that I found really quite interesting as I spoke with folks that use Ultimate throughout the country is that they found some tangential impacts on the city as a whole, the traffic in the city as a whole. Even in the areas where there wasn't a camera, people were starting to learn, oh, hey, I need to slow down. I need to respect the expectations. I need to honor the values that this city has. And so we can expect 30 to 60%, I will offer. There is one outlier in Georgia. They had a 71% reduction in these speed-related issues. And so I didn't want to put that up here because that was pretty impressive. And that was in particular around school zones, and we can talk more about that. Additionally, they, Ultimate, offers a comprehensive service from the detection of the violation to the payment to the, and beyond, even into if the violator requests a hearing, they will help us in that process as well. In addition, they provide constant and comprehensive subject matter expertise from the camera installation and its maintenance, or their maintenance, to legal support. And the last thing I wanted to make sure I put in here is I spoke with, I was able to speak with four different organizations that utilize this system. In particular, I would speak very highly of the conversation I had with the woman in Georgia, who, they employed this around all of their school zones in all of Georgia, and just wonderful positive testimonials on the services provided, the comprehensive nature, but also the customer service. I would offer, and I don't know if Mr. Dahl would have the same opinion, but even in our negotiation with them, with the contract, they were very appeasing to what we wanted. We had something to the effect of 20 requests, changes, and they appeased all but one of them. The only one they wouldn't let us have was having a say in who they sold their company to, if they ever sell it. And so I thought that was fairly reasonable, but they were exceptionally good to work with working through that process as well. Just to outline quickly the process, what this would look like for our citizens or in non-citizens utilizing the roadways. A speed violation would be detected by these cameras. And then it's released and put by the leased hardware, and then it's actually put into the system. We actually set the parameters of what identifies a violation. So if we want to set it at 5 miles an hour in a certain area, we can do that. If we want to set it at 1 mile an hour over the speed limit, we can do that. But we set the parameters. The violator's information, as it relates to the registration of the vehicle, the owner of the vehicle, goes into the system, and then in every case, in all cases, the first violation is always a warning. And then I would also add, in the first month, you could, it will only ever be warnings in the first month, just until we can make sure that we're educating, and I suppose education is the best word for that, till we're educating our public. After that month and after your first violation, each violation is then reviewed and approved or denied by a Wheat Ridge employee within the software, the forward-facing, public-facing, I'm sorry, it would be police department-facing side of the software. And I offer Wheat Ridge employee because we will initially staff this with sworn personnel in order to make sure that we're doing all the right things. But ultimately, the SB 200 would allow us to utilize a non-sworn employee who's been trained and that we've certified to do that work. So initially, we'll be doing it with sworn personnel, just because I think that's the right thing to do. And while we figure out how the system works, we want to make sure that we serve the public the way that they deserve to be served. Ultimate then sends out the written warning, if we opt to give them a warning, or the civil infraction to the vehicle's registered owner. And then a fine if it's a civil infraction. The fine schedule is $40 or $80. The difference is, if you're in a school zone or in a construction zone, it moves from that $40 infraction to an $80 infraction for the speeding infraction, and then 75 for a stop sign violation. The civil infraction is paid through Ultimate's website, or it can be paid by mail. The notice that the individual gets outlines the how-tos of these three options. Pardon me. And if they opt to go to a hearing, then Ultimate will assist us providing and prepping for that case preparation. Moving on to a conversation about the service agreement, a couple of the talking points I wanted to make sure that we identified here was that, first off, the hardware is leased, which... leased, which, uh, when we were chatting with, uh, the four, uh, organizations in this area that were not experiencing, uh, having good experiences with the, these systems or with this technology is to the upkeep on them, on, on the cameras, um, the certifications that are required is, can be quite expensive. And so the hardware is leased and it's paid for, uh, these lease payment, this lease payment is paid for at the onset of the contract through the civil infraction fines after the first $500. The first $500 will come to the city of Wheat Ridge, and after that, they will start collecting fees, uh, as I've outlined in the, uh, council action form, um, uh, to, to cover those lease payments. Uh, the next point is that the contract stipulates that at no time will a direct payment be expected from the city of Wheat Ridge. Uh, and if you wanted to reference the contract, that's in section seven, um, subsection E. Uh, and then the fines, as outlined in the contract, um, is a $40 speed violation, $75 red light violation. In the contract, it doesn't identify the school district, uh, uh, this, the, uh, the school areas or the construction areas. Um, the fees, uh, the way, the way the fee structure works, um, to pay for this is the, the fees, Ultimate receives 30% essentially of every $40, um, civil infraction. Uh, I had them include in the contract, uh, the $29 an hour so that we can actually have a, a better understanding about what that looks like. And then the city of Wheat Ridge receives approximately the remaining 70%. Um, that is paid, um, on a identified Friday once a month, um, and is, uh, and we will decide that once we, uh, start that part or move into that, uh, area of this, uh, conversation with Ultimate. Um, the other thing about this contract is that it easily can be expanded to incorporate red light cameras. I've spoke with, uh, some of the members of, of council about some interest in that. Um, and so we built into the ordinance and into the contract, uh, in, in, an expandable possibility to move into that area if we find that we like this product and we find that this, uh, works well and is actually functioning within our core values, our system, our core values. And then the last, uh, thing that I would offer as it relates to the service agreement is that at, at any time, the contract can be terminated, uh, we just have to make, uh, offer a 60-day written notice to them. Um, but there are other, uh, uh, the, there are other escape clauses, uh, in there. If we are unhappy with something that they are doing and we have, uh, given reasonable notice and we say, and, and they're still not honoring that, we can step out of the contract at any time, and it would be an immediate opportunity to step out. The last thing I wanted to talk about, or the second, uh, part of this I wanted to talk about was the ordinance. Um, and it, the ordinance, uh, aligns very nicely with, uh, SB 28, SB 23200, SB 24195, and then the Title 42 section that identifies the, uh, uh, the Avis, uh, technology. It allows, uh, for a hearing not less than 45 days later, which again, um, mirrors, uh, 23200. It only retains the information when there is a civil infraction issued, and that information is kept for three years per the municipal records retention schedule. Um, and so, uh, essentially the, the ordinance mirrors, uh, both of, um, the Senate bills that outline and, and identify, uh, those issues, and then that incorporates, uh, Title 42 in that conversation. And then, is there any questions that I have for you?
Thank you, Commander. We, uh, do not have any members of the public signed up to speak at this time, so we'll go to questions from council. Council Weaver.
Thanks, thanks for your presentation.
Sure.
Um, what happens if someone's going way over the speed limit? Is there an automatic call to, you know? Like in front of where I, I live, people often in the middle of the night drive past well 40 miles over the speed, posted speed limit. I was just curious what happens.
There is, so there's a magic.
And then I have another question.
I'm sorry.
And then I have another question, so.
Sure. Uh, there's a magic speed limit of 25 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. At that moment, it will register with Ultimate and it will come to our officers. Our officers will then address that in a, in a different way. It will not be the civil infraction. They will receive, it'll, it's about a $250 ticket that we will write through the, uh, Title 42, um, and, and into the, the municipality.
Awesome. And does that person, I just, because I don't know the laws on that, does that person also get followed up on besides a giant fee?
Right, we, we would.
It steps up in a, in a infraction, right?
So depending on where you're at, uh, you know, if, if you're, so you could actually move forward towards, uh, addressing it from a careless driving perspective, and even some situations, I, I think of, um, uh, I think of some of the side streets, uh, going north off of 38th, uh, if somebody's going 25 miles an hour over the speed limit, I would suggest that's even reckless. Uh, and that comes down to the discretion of our officers outlining and looking at and working through, uh, the civil infractions, I'm sorry, the, the, the speed detection, uh, that has come to us. And so we, we can, we have any number of, if we can articulate that it's a reckless driving situation, uh, we will pursue that.
So that can kind of loop in with the street racing stuff that we've also been thinking about, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Cool, thank you. My other question is on the billing. Um, not that I intend to get any tickets, uh, but something that has, uh, just irritates me about other systems is that there is oftentimes no option of not being charged a service fee. So is there an option where someone can mail in a check or not be charged the either credit cards or, I, it's just, it amazes me that small business, we're not allowed to separate costs, uh, like that, but yet when you pay bills, you, you, you know, whether you do it from your bank account, will there be an option where people aren't charged a service fee?
Right, they can actually pay it through the mail, uh, with, with their checks. Um, there is still, they're still charged a service fee of, of, of $12, but they don't, they don't pay that extra 4% uh, for the use of the credit card.
Okay.
Through the automated system.
Okay, and that's regardless of if you pay with card or your bank account or whatever?
Right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a, a couple of questions. The first thing I wanted to point out though, if you look on the, um, the actual, uh, ordinance, and, uh, if you, uh, look at the third whereas and the fourth whereas, the Wheat Ridge Police Department, uh, it talks about detecting violations of tragic regulations, and I believe it should be traffic regulations.
Oh, my apologies, I missed that.
And that's perfectly right. And, uh, Division Chief Kellogg, would you mind just, uh, a, a sort of an overview of the difference between, uh, existing technology for, uh, traffic cameras and speed, uh, cameras, um, that have been around for frankly, a long time, uh, and this technology?
And I'm, I'm sorry, the, the question is, can I outline how the technology has developed? Is that the question?
Well, um, I guess the question is more, what's the, the difference between existing technology and the, um, you can, I was, uh, driving through Boulder the other day, and they've got several big intersections that have, uh, the red light cameras. Um, and, uh, we've all seen, uh, the trailers parked on the side of the road that, um, will take a picture of people speeding through school zones or whatever. Is this technology significantly different?
Uh, it is similar technology. What Ultimate has done is they have automated the entire system, um, with, uh, and left the officer's discretion in place as we were, were able to evaluate each and every one of those violations. Um, so the, 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 the technology is similar. Um, what is added to, so it is essentially a laser, uh, like our officers use now, um, to, 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 to detect speed measurement, uh, and accompanied with that laser, what tr- triggers when the laser experiences, uh, a violation is it, it automatically takes a picture, takes a picture of the, of the license plate, and then it banks it into its system, and it does the, uh, the search for the registered owner. And then that comes to us for our exercising of our discretion as to whether this is something that we need to pursue or that we will need to send a warning for.
If I, if I could just add one, two, a couple of quick points, that this system was in use at my last stop, last job before this, um, it, it was much more labor intensive. In other words, we'd have to send officers out to calibrate the speed of the machines, so they would have to go through, shut down the road, run through in their cars that had been calibrated to make sure that the machines were matching. The internal calibration characteristics of these machines are much better, such that we don't need to do that. Also, if you've ever gotten a, a ticket before, um, I never have, but my kids seem to love the paparazzi chasing them around, so those cameras would, would flash at them all the time. And then you could tell, like, maybe I should slow down, there's something going on up there. These cameras won't, uh, have that, that flash technology. So a lot of things have evolved over time, uh, they're, they're not huge. It is based, as, as Division Chief Kellogg says, on existing technology, but, um, the use of AI to, to streamline this, to identify a tag, then have that corroborated by a human makes it so much easier to process it. By the time we get it, it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's not done till we say it's done, but it's, 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 it's pretty much, um, locked in whether they can read the tag or not, as opposed to a bunch of people looking through a magnifying glass trying to make their best guess. So the, the camera's more defined, the technology is better, and the, these things have been proven and held up in court over time in ways that they didn't used to always hold up previously. So I just want to add that experience in.
If, if I could, uh, add one more question here, and this, uh, uh, again, uh, sort of gets to the, the shift in technology. Um, if somebody is, uh, exceeding the speed limit and they're, uh, they're tagged by a patrol officer, they're issued a ticket, and, uh, if they, um, once they agree to, uh, uh, send a check in for the value of that ticket, uh, they typically have some points taken off their license. Uh, since this is a, a basic civil infraction, will that be the case for somebody that has their second infraction and, uh, they plead guilty?
Uh, no, they are not, there is never a time when, uh, uh, points are taken off of their license. This is comprehensively civil infractions unless, of course, as we talked about earlier, it is, uh, above that 25 miles an hour, and then, uh, I'm sorry, it is 25 miles an hour above the speed limit, uh, then our officers will discretionarily address that through whatever means they feel is most appropriate. Um, so it, it, they don't, uh, they don't get points on their license, um, they pay, and hopefully they pay that $40 or that $80, uh, every time, and hopefully eventually, uh, they are educated about what our core values are and, and what it means to be a safe driver in the cities of, in the city of Wheat Ridge.
And then, uh, finally, um, there was a, a note in, in the agreement with Ultimate, um, about the use of warning signs for one of these, uh, where one of these locations is set up. Um, tell me a little bit about what, uh, what sort of warning signs and how far from the intersection or whatever they will be placed.
Right, so the, the law requires, um, SB 23200 and actually, uh, 24195, uh, uh, echoes the requirement to have signs up and posted. Um, we'll need to post them 300 feet, uh, on either side of the, of the cameras. The, there will be one camera that catches east and west, um, uh, that catches east and west, well, which, which will require permanent signs 300 feet on either side of it. And there are temporaries, uh, there are two other, I'm sorry, there's one temporary trailer and then there's a handheld. Uh, with the trailer, we'll have to have a temporary signs, uh, deployed for that, and with the handheld, we'll also have those temporary signs that we deploy when we go into a certain area. 300 feet is the, is the magic number on that. Uh, the law actually says between 200 and 500, but what, uh, 20, uh, 24195 identifies is, um, they kind of, they, not kind of, they believe that the magic number is 300 feet.
And, and, well, that, that certainly addresses, um, the issue of somebody who says, I didn't know, um, they will see a sign when they approach the intersection. And then, uh, finally, since we're not using, um, flash bulbs, how will these work at night?
Uh, they're infrared, they, they catch, they catch the movements and then they utilize infrared cameras, uh, to take the pictures of the, of the license plates.
Great, that's great, thank you. No, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I didn't mean to interrupt. I will offer one thing, um, from your previous question. We intend on doing a, a very, uh, a, a very robust, uh, educational campaign through social media and a variety of other ways to make sure people are aware that these are coming and, and these are where they're at. Um, because we, we don't actually want to be the, you know, we don't want to be the gotcha guys, you know? We don't want to put people in that position. We want them to understand, because I mean, even the way we do this communicates our values and our, and our ethics.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Division Chief Kellogg. This is wonderful, um, plan, and really excited for us to have this. Um, just to follow up a little bit on kind of what you were touching on earlier, is the plan to, um, deploy these and then change locations throughout, you know, every few months or so?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so we are going to, what we're doing is we're going to deploy a permanent station at an area that we believe will, will, um, stand longer, will, it'll take longer than that 12 months to educate. Um, the, um, and, and so with that said, even though it's a permanent, it's permanently affixed, we can move those, um, but it's a, it's a removal, it's a, you know, a removal from this area and an installation over here. The tra- the trailers are easily moved, and then of course, we'll have a handheld product, um, that we will take with us and, and address a variety of, uh, locations, uh, just to make sure we're catching everything. But yeah, and, uh, what we need to do so, uh, comprehensively, as I said, the service is, is wonderful. All we do is we call our Ultimate, uh, uh, representative here in the Denver metro area, and he and his team will, uh, set up a time for when, um, the trailer, they'll move the next day, the permanent camera, they can move within a week. So, now I would also offer, um, their, their, they also offer, uh, a consultation about where to move those cameras. We can expect a diminishment of, uh, uh, of those, or a reduction in, in the speed, uh, like I said, 30 to 60% in that first 12 months. So we'll keep monitoring that and we'll work with Ultimate to address whether we want to move that or whether it's, it's having the effect that we want.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Time to hear a second, let me close my window, my dog's barking. Um, so I have a couple of questions, uh, to Councilmember Weaver's question about excessive speeding. So just, just, so I'm understanding correctly, if somebody is clocked using this system going over 25 miles an hour, you're able to use this system to follow up with, uh, uh, an infraction violation, not a civil penalty, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that is, is that captured anywhere in the ordinance or is that, where, where is that?
Uh, 23200, SB 23200 outlines that.
Okay. Um, all right. And then my second question, and it's a clarification, I think I understand it, but in, so if the violation is 10 miles an hour or less, the first infraction is a warning, and then after that, they start to accrue the civil penalties. And if it's 10 miles an hour or more, they don't get a warning, their first infraction is a penalty. Am I reading that correctly?
Um, so everybody's first infraction, what, as long as it's under that 25 miles an hour over the, the speed limit, will be a warning. Anything after that first war, that first warning, that first violation will be a civil infraction, as long as they don't exceed that 25 miles an hour over the speed limit.
Okay, so, so in this, it breaks out 10 miles an hour, um, over and under, is there any differentiation between the two, or are they equivalencies?
Uh, in this system, in this, uh, Avis system, we set the parameters, so, um, so it's, to answer your question, it, it is the same, whether they're 10 miles an hour over or 15 miles an hour over, it's, it's $40 or $80 depending on where it is.
Okay, so there's no particular reason that's called out differently in the ordinance? Um, I'm just looking at section 1392, and it just has different paragraphs. I'm just looking at section 1392 and it just has different paragraphs for under 10 and over 10, but effectively there's no difference.
Right, there's no difference.
Okay, um, so I-
I'm sorry, Counselor, just so you know, we, we, we're not going to be doing one or five miles an hour. Most of the violations will probably be close to that 10 miles. Depending on the road speed, there's, there's more or less a, more of a national model now for what speeds you should be collecting fines at. So it's not just, we, we, we could set them for, for different tolerances, but most likely that 10 miles an hour under or 10 miles an hour over is probably in most places not going to generate maybe eight miles an hour in some school zones or something like that. But there is still that tolerance level that we're granting to the community. So that'll be set up based on best practices, just as an example.
Yeah, thanks, Chief, I appreciate that explanation. I guess I'm, so the way I read this language is because those are two different paragraphs describing less than and over than, I actually read that only the under than's get the first offense as a penalty surcharge. So I'm wondering if we can just strike paragraph A2 in section 1392 and, and have for speeding violations, less than 25 miles per hour. And then it outline, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and it probably would, I defer to Mr. Dahl who did a lot of work on this, but I think that would be a prudent way to go because it is confusing the issue a little bit.
Okay. Well, if I might, if you just deleted 1392A2, you'd be left with a regime that only dealt with violations of less than 10 miles per hour over. And even if you, well, hear me out, even if you replaced A2 with something about 25 miles per hour over, what you then wouldn't capture would be 10 miles over up to 25 miles over. And as noted by the chief and others, that's where the bulk of the violations will be or that we will want to be following up with in the ultimate system. So we certainly could, we, we could adjust this. Right now, as written, if you're less than 10 miles for your first offense, it's a warning. And if you're second and later, it's a notice of violation. What I think you probably are wanting is to confirm that the first violation or the first ticket, the first instance up to the 25 miles an hour over is a warning universally. And we can make it say that. I don't believe, and the, the chief or DC colleague could correct me, but I don't believe we need to have in the ordinance the ability to, to penalize separately and to charge separately offenses 25 and up. That could be careless, it could be reckless, it could be lots of other things that, that the department will follow up. They'll look at the, at the, at the, the video, they'll look at the picture and they'll be able to get a license plate number, run that and, and follow up as they do for those kinds of offenses. So maybe if we're doing one thing at a time, I suppose it's making sure that it's a warning universally for the first, the first violation to a, to a given license plate. Is that what we're trying to accomplish?
Well, yeah, it looks like it may have been written that anything over 10, you don't get a warning. I think we may have contemplated that, but I don't know, Chief's got something to add to that.
No, that, that's how we actually, I think originally wrote it, was that it was going to be, you know, we were going to give the lesser speed violations, but anybody was over that 10 mile an hour threshold was issued, went straight to violation. But if counsel believes that everybody should get the warning, that's something, as Mr. Dahl alluded to, I think we could figure it out. But originally that was to, to say, hey, we, you know, we recognize there's a difference in the, in the, to Counselor Weaver's earlier comment, we, we recognize difference in speed violations. So there are those of us who don't pay attention and there are those of us who are just heavy footed and we want to recognize that, that. So I guess that revolves in the council's court. If you want to change it, certainly Mr. Dahl is, is good at making adjustments on the fly. But if you're okay with issuing, going straight to violation for those who are in excessive speed, then we would let it stand.
So I, so first of all, I do think the language is confusing. So I do think we need to clear this, clear this up if we decide we're not, we're skipping the warnings. And it seems like from everything and the presentation and the research and as part of our culture is that the warning was pretty well baked into that. As you know, the first month, it's all warnings. So I think we need to clarify this about it, it, this, you know, because people squawk about automated enforcement, I think it's really important that our ordinance is pretty watertight and clear about what we're doing. So I would propose that we strike paragraph two and come up with some sort of language. And do we even need to reference the miles per hour or, you know, the over, the over, under? And just say for speeding violations, over the reasonable and prudent speed under a city or county, just get rid of the mile per hour reference? And then just stick with the, the warnings for the first ones? That would be, I think, more consistent with what was presented tonight. But I would welcome some discussion from my, my peers on any preferences. But I think this is reading differently than what was presented.
Mr. Dahl? It might be relevant for us to, to, because what you're suggesting is warning first time for everything, notice of violation, second time and on up for everything, and we could write that. It might be useful for us to, to hear sort of what the, the record keeping consequences would be of warnings across the board. And I'm not sure of that, and I don't know if, if, if DC Kellogg, you could address that. Because if we make it universal, then that's a lot more warnings. And then you, and I'm not saying that's bad, I'm just saying that's a consequence. And it also means you've got to keep track of who's gotten a warning. So now they're in violation territory universally. And I assume you keep track of that by license plate. But, but there's a record keeping and tracking aspect to that proposed change that I think counsel should know about.
The system, Ultimate System, they, the forward-facing aspect of the software will keep and monitor the, the license plates and will know when the, when that license plate has been in violation previously and if it's received a warning in the past.
And I, I actually have a question about that. Is it a warning in, anywhere in the city? If you've gotten it on one corridor, that's your warning? And then if you get caught on a second corridor, then it's, you receive the fine? Or is it per location?
It's a, it's, it's a one, you get one chance at it. So you get that one warning. The, the goal is to educate and to make sure that people are following and honoring our core values and our, 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 our traffic laws. So they get one, they get one shot.
Okay. Um, well, I, I mean, as much as I actually like, in my heart, would love to just give everybody big tickets, especially if they're going 10 miles an hour or over. If, what I'm understanding from the research and presentation around this being education, I, I would propose we clarify the language that everybody on their first offense is receiving a warning. And then after that, it moves. I think it gets a little bit confusing in the language in here is a little bit confusing about over and under 10 miles per hour. So I, it's a little bit hard not being there in person. But I, I move to strike paragraph A2 and then in section 1392. And then additionally, in section 1392, paragraph A1, delete the language of less than 10 miles per hour.
Counselor Hulteen, we're not at a motion stage yet, so if you would like to hang on to that language, we will address that when we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right, that concludes my questions, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Alm?
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on the discussion about the speeds, I just want to, just ask each of us that lives in Wheat Ridge, I'm going to assume that everybody lives in the neighborhood and that those neighborhoods are 25 miles an hour. I'm going to think about those roads that are in my district. There's no sidewalk, I got someone walking their dog, somebody with their kid, it's 25 mile an hour. So at 10 miles over, we're looking at 35 miles an hour. If we're not doing criminal speed, 25 plus 24, we're looking at 49 miles an hour. So the question is, are we okay with giving a warning if somebody's going 49 mile an hour down that road with one of our constituents, walking their dog, walking their kid? I'm not, I'm not okay with that. That should not be a warning, that's wrong. And so, you know, even 10 is, is a lot, but I'm not okay with 49 ripping down the roads. I think that should be an automatic ticket, not a warning. So that's, that's my discussion part of it. And I want us to think about it, that's just my opinion, but I want us to think about that, I think that's unsafe. What do we do with cars, and I'm seeing a lot more of it, no license plate? Does it, what is, what does it tell you?
Right, so it's, that's a challenge. That is going to be a challenge that the system will, will not actually address right away. But what our officers will do is we will, we will follow up on those and we'll do the best, we'll do the best we can to find that. I'd like to actually address the point that you made earlier, though. We're, we're not governed specifically by just the 10 miles an hour. If our officers, so the nice part about this is when we are reviewing all the data, we still, we, we still maintain our discretion. So if we see, so I could, I'll offer this. In a residential area, a little while back, there was a, there was a, a house party going on with some young kids and they were playing basketball in the, in the street, like, like we all did when we were kids. And this car is driving down the street, it was about 30 miles an hour, so about five miles an hour over the speed limit. But it was still, and he just cruised right through. That's still a reckless ticket that we can address. If we are looking at the video and we're experiencing the, the read on this, we can actually, we can actually say, yeah, no, we're, we're not going to go down the civil infraction route. We can actually then say, we're going to address this through a reckless ticket or a careless ticket or a, or a five mile an hour over the speed limit ticket or whatever is most appropriate. We, we in no way, shape or form are giving up our discretion to address those things.
And, thank you. And then another question I have is, and I know a little bit about it, but what about having, basically at the CDOT highways, so like say 38th and Kipling, I, I at least a couple times a month, I see a lot of left turn crashes, people running through red lights, I know at CDOT, what is, how does, tell me about the nuances of placing some type of, not so much even the speed, but just a red light camera on any part of CDOT highways?
Right, so if we are east-west around Kipling, we can, we, the municipality can address it unto ourself. If we want to address the north-south of Kipling, we would work with CDOT, well, we would essentially work with CDOT and Colorado State Police. And we would, we would work with them, I've already established those contacts. They're very open to the conversation and are very open to any kind of assistance that we can give them. I'll offer the accident on, on I-70 about six, I guess it's about two months ago now, that they've already contacted me and asked, would we be willing to consider making that or identifying that as a speed measurement corridor? Which, once we get all the bugs worked out, if there are any, I don't think there will be any. But once we get all this figured out and how we do this, that may be something that I would, and it would require me to come to you and request that we identify that as a speed corridor. But at this moment, we're going to try and stay away from that until we figure out how the system works and what we need to do to make this most productive and efficient.
And then the, the one question I have is for Director DeAndrea and you. So if we were to set up the red light cameras on the east-west of say Kipling and 38th, can that data then be shared to make some decisions about that intersection? Because you're getting real-time data.
Yes, absolutely. We'd, well, we've been working closely with the traffic division to share data back and forth when we do counts, and that data would be very similar where we want that input and feedback so that we can make good decisions out there for any engineering options or alternates that we want to implement.
Yeah, the data is, belongs to us, so we can, you can share it in any way, in any way that benefits our, our city.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hulteen, is this a new hand or an old hand that's up there?
It's a new hand, it's a, it's a fresh, it's a fresh hand.
Please, be recognized.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I'm, I just reread the ordinance through the lens of this discussion and I'm concerned that what we have here reads to people, and I, and I very much agree with Councilmember Alm. I mean, people going 25 miles an hour through my neighborhood is criminally negligent and incredibly dangerous. And I worry that community members who pay close attention to this or get fined through this and start to dig in it, will, will find that it's, you know, it's a little permissive around the 10 miles per hour and the fine system. And that I'm more concerned, though, that there's nowhere in here that actually says that the police department is able to use and plans to use its discretion on, on following up with other, other charges or other ticketing at their discretion if it's, if it's in viola, I mean, it seems kind of a little bit ambiguous. And I know you said it's referenced in state legislation, but I, I'm a little bit concerned about the ambiguity of the, that there's, there isn't any reference here. And so I read it that maybe I can, if I'm really addicted to speed, I could, you know, just get a bunch of $20 or $40 infractions and go as fast as I want and just keep paying those. And so I just, I'm, I'm wondering if you saw any precedent as you were researching this that actually referred to the police department's discretion to use other, other law enforcement techniques for excessive speed or careless speed?
What I looked at was kind of the other side of the, of the argument in, in that I, I looked for any place that suggested that we were conceding our right to discretion and to, to address those things within our discretion, and, and I could find none. I couldn't find anything in, in 24195 or 23200, nor could I find it in Title 42 addressing this. In addition, I couldn't find any other items or issues surrounding that in any other state.
Okay, um, then I will hold more questions for discussion, thank you.
Thank you. Division Chief, what do you do on stolen vehicles?
Right, if, if the plate is, if the plate is still on it and it's identifying as a stolen, we're going to actually initiate a, a response, we're going to see what we can do to, to find that and do the best we can to address it. This can actually be a wonderful tool for us to identify those stolen vehicles. And if we start to see a stolen vehicle spending a lot of time in a certain area, I'll reference, I'll reference another case that we just had. Many of you may have been aware, we had a, we had kind of a serial, a motorcycle, an individual on a motorcycle who was a bit of a serial eluder. He just would never stop for us and he was remarkably dangerous on his motorcycle. Utilizing some of the techniques that our officers have learned and, and being very observant, we were able to sink down and figure out where he was. And ultimately, we closed that loop a couple of weeks ago and we were able to seize that motorcycle and make the arrest on that individual. With this, coupled with those, those skills, those talents that our officers have, will, will help us to address, I think, that stolen vehicle issue that for a while was so high here in Denver.
Thank you. And then Mr. Dahl, I had a, I had a question or two on, on some of your paragraph identifications in 1392. And I've got section A, number one, A and B, number two, starting with B, C, and should that be A and B?
I don't think so.
I think you have paren A, then you have paren one. Within paren one, you've got non-parent.
Well, I'm looking at paren number two.
Right. Uh, that's just a paren two on it for speeding. It relates to speeding.
Page four?
Page four. B is civil penalty, so we departed the speeding.
Is there an A?
There is not.
There isn't.
Yeah.
There is no A?
There is an A. As speeding violations is, page, A, A is speeding violations. Under 1392, you have sub-A, which is speeding.
Right.
Sub-B, civil penalty. Sub-C, signage.
No way there. On page four of your, of your ordinance?
Yes. Well, you start on page three with Section 1392.
Okay, 1392, I've got A.
A is speeding.
I've got paren one, I've got small a and small b.
Right, but that's all under speeding. I mean, that's sort of.
Well, I'm gonna go to number two.
Okay.
And then I've got, under number two, I've got paren B on the next page, and paren C.
Note, respectfully, paren B on the next page is, is the same level of, of importance as paren A, speeding violations. You know, it's the heading for paren B, civil penalties, italics. So you, you've moved on to a new topic.
So I'm on, yeah, but why don't I, why don't I have A and B there?
Be, because for what I'll call paren A1, it even has pieces to A1, so it's indented yet again with A and B, which are not in parentheses. Right? So it's, it's even a, a more mind, fine distinction.
Okay, so that, that relates to speeding violations.
Right.
B and C.
Are new topics.
And then, let's go down to then under signage.
C2, right.
Should, should.
It should be indented in.
Should paren two be indented?
It should be, yes.
Okay, and then going down to 1393, I go A, B, C, D, A, B, C, E, and F? Is there, should there be a D there?
They should be D and E. Good catch.
Okay.
I'm making notes as we go.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Sorry, what? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and, Councilor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
I was still in the parentheses here, hold on a sec. I move to approve, thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 22-2024, an ordinance adopting a new Article 6, Chapter 13 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Automated Vehicle Identification Systems. Second reading, order it published and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication as provided by Section 511 of the Charter.
We have a, a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Holtine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in light of Councilmember Ohm's comments, um, I actually propose that we keep the language as drafted, um, with, with the intention in Section 1392 that if the speeding violation is 10 miles an hour or more over the speed limit, that it, uh, skips the warning and goes straight to a fine. So I am satisfied with that language. I do think it's still a little confusing, but, uh, clear enough here, and so I'm, I'm gonna withdraw my proposed amended language.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Councilmember Holtine. I, I'm very passionate about, uh, the speeding issues that we have in our city. It's gone on a long time. I have constituents, you know, monthly that complain, and I see it, um, you know, just even driving here tonight for council, I'm on, you know, at my, where I live in on 38th, and some guy's blowing through the, the stoplight, probably going, you know, 45 into 35, and, and, uh, we need, we really need to change this behavior. Um, I know I've had constituents that would gladly stand in line for hours to get their hands on one of those mobile, uh, radar guns, you know, to curtail some of the speeding in the city, and, and I, and I, I have a lot of trust and faith in, in the PD that, you know, this is gonna be a tool that we're gonna use to change that behavior, um, and, and that's what we really want for our city. We want our city to be safe, um, and want our visitors, you know, that come to the city to understand that, um, you know, we, we want this quality of life and we want safety in our neighborhoods, and I hear it everywhere that the speeding is just, it's gotta stop, and this is a tool that I am, I'm very supportive of, and I really appreciate everybody's comments. Um, and, and thank you, Councilmember Holtine, for your comments, too.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Snell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just like to echo that, uh, from Councilmember Ohm. Since I have been on council and I get communication from constituents, that's, speeding is the number one topic of conversation. Um, and so it's, I'm, I'm grateful to have this. Um, I'm also grateful to those constituents that reached out and said, hey, this is a problem. Hey, we're trying to get to the park, and I don't feel safe with my stroller, and so I just wanted to, to recognize, um, the constituents and, and, you know, being that squeaky wheel and, and, you know, some of these solutions don't, they, they don't come quickly, but everything that's being discussed is, you know, taking this into, into consideration and, you know, being, making our community better and safer. And I'm grateful for all the, all the work that y'all have done on it, PD and chief, and appreciate that. But also, constituents, please, um, continue to let us know, you know, we know that speeding is a, is a huge issue in our community and everywhere. Everybody's in a hurry. So I, uh, I am just grateful for this and I'm glad to see it, uh, coming to fruition here.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting this, and I also just wanna acknowledge that it's been really great to hear that your traffic staff is fully to the amount that you want, and, and it, and I feel like it's, it's been apparent. You know, I think just having more cars out there and visible does slow the traffic down as well. So I just wanna thank everybody for that, that team for doing their thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for a good discussion on this item. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Four. Councilor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve a service agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and Ultimate Incorporated to provide automated vehicle identification services. At issue, the use of technology in law enforcement continues to be one of the more impactful changes to modern-day policing. One of those innovative technologies that is expanding nationwide is use of automation within traffic enforcement. Wheat Ridge is a smaller community impacted by major roadways and highways, often used to transit the City of Wheat Ridge by community members and non-community members alike. This volume of traffic makes it difficult for an agency sized and served the community of residents and businesses to adequately meet the demands of traffic control and safety. The use of automated vehicle identification systems, Avis, to promote traffic safety, greater accountability, and more responsiveness to community concerns fulfill a necessary void. To leverage the current Avis technology, the Wheat Ridge Police Department researched the use and implementation of the Avis technology. During the research, the Wheat Ridge Police Department met with Ultimate Incorporated, a leader in the provision of Avis technology since 2005 with a proven track record. We believe Ultimate best serves the needs of the Wheat Ridge Police Department.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. Um, Mr. Dahl, do you have any further staff presentations on this? I know that we.
We don't. Division Chief Kellogg covered this, um, in his previous presentation, so if you have any additional questions, we're here to help answer those.
I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this item. Are there any questions, uh, further questions on council of staff on this, uh, item? Okay, hearing none. Um, Councilor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the service agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and Ultimate Incorporated to provide automated vehicle identification services.
Good motion and a second by Councilor Weaver, that's a spread in the well. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor Ohm?
I'll be quick. Um, I just wanted to thank Division Chief Kellogg that, uh, thoroughly going through, um, not just, you know, what we're looking for, but can, doing a comparison, uh, really means a lot to me. Anytime that you can, you know, staff can bring up, you know, we've looked at different municipalities and we, we've actually talked to different people that are using it, that means a lot. You've done your due diligence, and I really appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Councilor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also wanted to echo that, uh, I didn't speak in the last one, but, uh, the, the research in this is, and speaking with all the other municipalities and looking at all the other, uh, uh, firms is, is, is phenomenal, and then looking at the, the Senate bills and, and all that, just to make sure that, that we're totally covered. Appreciate the police, uh, on, on their hard work on this, so thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you very much. That concludes our, um, action items on tonight's agenda. We will now go to, uh, City Managers Matters. Mr. Dahl?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item, uh, before our special study session. Um, we did this last Wednesday, I guess. Was it Wednesday we closed? Yeah, Wednesday. Lose the track of time. We closed on, um, our first round of, of bonds, um, in the amount of 34.845 million. That nets out, um, project funding in the amount of 33 million, 345 million, or 33.345 million. Um, and, uh, our ordinance for the, for this bond, um, allowed up to an interest rate of 4.75 percent. We were able to get a net effective rate of 3.96 percent. And, um, luckily that we, we did price these bonds back. We did just close last Wednesday, but we priced the bonds back October 10th, and, um, since that time, uh, um, tax pretense with bonds have increased 30 basis points. So, we, uh, perfectly timed this, so, um, we got a good rate, and, um, we'll, uh, come back in the future with an update on, um, how we're moving forward on our, these two J projects.
Great.
Thank you.
Nothing like perfection.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Uh, Mr. Dahl, City Attorneys Matters?
Well, speaking of closings, I know that you, you probably thought we'd already closed on the green, but, you know, I, I think I mentioned to you that there were, there were some, uh, issues with, uh, uh, just, uh, working with the title company to make sure we had the language that covered the county's, uh, potential reverter interest, and it's, it's a, it's kind of a, a discussion that's, that's, that's way too attenuated and in the weeds for everyone, including apparently the title company's, uh, attorneys. And so we have figured out, or yet, the last workaround, and it really involves, uh, the county being, uh, nice enough to say, we don't have to be named on this title policy, that the title company's having trouble figuring out how to cover them. So both the county and the school district have been great to work with, the attorneys for, for both those entities, and I have been quietly struggling with title company, but just in the last few days, the county has said, we don't wanna hold this up any longer, we're, we're fine. So we're moving toward closing, and I expect to have the actual closing done within a week, and the, the city will own that property now that it has, uh, commenced and done really a lot of improvements on that, that property. But, uh, I'm pleased that we're able to work with our two partners on that really cooperatively, and the next time you see me in front of you, I'm confident the city will be entitled to a park that it has been, uh, building. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to elected officials matters. Let's start with our counselors online. Uh, Councilor Holtine?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Larson?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I do have a couple of things I'd like to catch up on. Um, and just the past couple of weeks, been really quite busy. Uh, on Wednesday, October 16th, I attended the Jefferson County Historical Commission's annual Hall of Fame Awards presented at the Colorado School of Mines. At the event, the Wheat Ridge Historical Society was recognized for its outstanding achievement with the Norm and Ethel Meyer Award for Historic Preservation. I'm pleased to report that this prestigious award was accepted by Janet Bradford, uh, the Historical Society President, and Marta Hedy, the Publications Director. I was honored to join members of our Historical Society and Brandon Altenberg of our Parks and Rec Department in representing the society and the City of Wheat Ridge in accepting the award. Very next morning, I attended the 13th Annual RSE Breakfast to recognize this year's Champion of Youth Award. RSE is the Arvada Wheat Ridge Service Ambassadors for Youth. This year's Champion of Youth Award was presented to Nathaniel Chamberlain, a longtime counselor at Jefferson Junior Senior High School. We also heard from Dr. Landon Pires, the new president of Red Rocks Community College, and from Tracy Dorland, the superintendent of Jeffco School District. Since 2001, Arvada Wheat Ridge Service Ambassadors for Youth have, has recognized youth in our community who have overcome a major life obstacle or adversity. Every year, RSE acknowledges these deserving youth with a practical gift, in the case of high school seniors, scholarship opportunities to Red Rocks Community College. RSE continues to be an important asset for our community, and I look forward to attending the annual RSE recognition awards at Arvada West High School in April. Finally, on last Wednesday, the 23rd, I had the honor of joining Mayor, Mayor Starker and Councilmember Ohm at the Wheat Ridge Police Department Annual Awards Ceremony. This special event recognizes the individual and team efforts of our city's sworn officers and staff in their year-round 24/7 protection and service to our community. It was truly an honor to attend the annual awards event and spend the evening in the presence of such admirable men and women. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to, uh, Councilor Snell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wanted to say a thank you to the Wheat Ridge High School PTA. I was invited to a meeting, uh, out there. They wanted to have, uh, members of city council come out as they are looking for ways to kind of strengthen relationships between the school and the school, um, the parents and students and the city, and perhaps some, um, joint efforts with, um, getting students more involved in civic activities. Um, so more to come on that, but, uh, it was really just a great discussion, and so I wanted to say thank you for that. And then, um, of course, a reminder, Halloween is this week, as we just came off of a very robust traffic discussion. Um, Halloween is Thursday, and there's gonna be lots of little ghouls and goblins out there, and so please, please be safe, take your time, wear lots of lights, um, be a chandelier for Halloween if you want, so you can have a lot of light on you. But in all seriousness, please be safe and, and let's make it a fun, um, holiday for our, our kiddos. Um, and then just one, uh, personal shout-out, I wanted to just recognize Wheat Ridge Animal Hospital. We recently had our, um, our pup in for some surgery, and I think we in Wheat Ridge are, you know, sometimes we, you know, almost take for granted things that we see, and we drive by all the time, and Wheat Ridge Animal Hospital is a phenomenal facility, and I just wanted to say a big thank you to them for the knowledge and the caring and the, the, just the overall experience was great, um, and then our, our Norman is, is good, so we're good to go, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I enjoy attending the Police Department Award Ceremony with the Mayor and Councilmember, Dan Larson. Um, and then I also got to do a, uh, two ribbon cuttings last Friday. Um, the first one was at Colorado Plus for the remodeling that, uh, Eugene did. That looked really nice out there. And then, uh, also the ribbon cutting for Thrift to Thrive, uh, it's on 44th East of Wadsworth, and chatted with the owner, Denise, that, um, she helps, uh, developmentally disabled, uh, people at that business, and I, I had, I probably driven by there several times and, and did not know that until I stopped in. So if you get a chance, go in there and have a chat with them. Um, they're, you know, I think she's really doing some good work there and, and be supportive of that business. Um, and I also wanted to give a shout-out to, um, Tad of Stylist and Crate. Um, we have some amazing business owners in Wheat Ridge, and, um, Tad has been working with, uh, you know, Eugene at Colorado Plus to do shared parking, which I think is fantastic. We need more, more, uh, shared parking in Wheat Ridge to really help the businesses, and I hope that's something that we can keep fostering, um, you know, over the years, and just more and more shared parking, keep having conversations, um, you know, business people, reach out to, you know, staff, reach out to your city council people to, you know, keep sharing that, and I hear a lot of good things about, uh, you know, Jeff from Clancy's and, and how they all, and they all kinda get together and they all kinda, you know, share the parking and, and, uh, sharing the business. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know everyone's excited about Halloween and Thanksgiving, but most importantly, the goats are going back to Happiness Gardens this next month, so, uh, we'll have them back there. They will, you know, we had someone talk about all the amazing things that are grown at Happiness Gardens. They're gonna eat 'em all down over the month of November, so, uh, if you feel like seeing the goats over on the other side of Wheat Ridge, they will be out and about. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, don't get to go out of town very often, but last week, unfortunately, I had to go out of town, so I missed the police officers', uh, award ceremony, so I'm sorry to miss that, uh, uh, congratulations to all the officers who was honored, who were honored, um, and then also had to miss the ribbon cuttings, which I was, I was bummed about. I always like. I always like to make it to those. But just to echo what Counselor Ohm said, it's it's great to have Colorado Plus back open on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. But it's not only great to have Colorado Plus back open, but it's great to see how the other businesses on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Mestizo and Clancy's and and Wolf and Wildflower and Stylist and Crate are all there to support their fellow businesses as they come back in. So, it's just really great to see what kind of business owners we have in Wheat Ridge. And when you buy in Wheat Ridge, you, you know, when you can shop in Wheat Ridge and you can find in Wheat Ridge, you're supporting great people. So, thank you.
Thank you. I most of my most of my thunder's already been stolen, but I will say that it was great to attend the ribbon cuttings for Colorado Plus and Thrift to Thrive. They've got a great business model helping disadvantaged and folks in our community. So, I hope I hope you'll be a great patron on those businesses. I was I was really happy to to join Counselor Larson in the RSE Breakfast the other day. It was a lot of a lot of great good feelings. You know, you see disadvantaged kids who have who have overcome and triumphed over some really hard things in their lives, and they're moving forward with great with great vigor. Great to great to attend the police awards ceremony. You've got a great, great department there, Chief. And whatever we can do to to support the officers, I'm really happy to happy to do that. And you've got a great staff there. I was really, really happy. Our Metro Mayor's Caucus put together about ten or twelve mayors that spent last Thursday with Habitat for Humanity, building a home over in the Denver neighborhood. We did that a year ago in Wheat Ridge. And it's it's a great program, and it's really great to see affordable housing coming to not only our community, but other communities around us. Is there any other business come before us before we were going to adjourn to a special study session? So, we are going to adjourn this meeting. And I think, why don't we just take take about five minutes or less and just take a quick break, and then we'll be back for a study session? Thank you. I'd like to call to order the special study session for the city of Wheat Ridge for October the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. We have two study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the City Snow and Ice Control Program Overview. And item number two is the Wadsworth Improvement Project Construction Updates. We did not invite the public to speak on the study session item before our regular meeting. So, I will announce that we would do that now, but no one has signed up to speak. So, we will go past that and go to agenda item number one. This is our City Snow and Ice Control Program Overview. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually may get a cold day this week, so we thought we should start talking about snow and ice, right? Maria DeAndrea is going to give us a quick update on our program. And the Police Department is also here to talk about code enforcement. And then, we'll move into the Wadsworth Improvement Project Update. Maria?
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. We're going to go quick, given the lateness of the hour. So, first, I'd like to introduce to you Mike Von Sich, who's our Public Works Operations Supervisor. Many of you may know him. He was recently promoted within the last four to five months to replace Jim Killie, who was with us for thirty-one years. And Mike's doing a fabulous job and facing his first winter as the Operations Supervisor. So, he has been with the city for over six years and again, is doing a great job. So, he's going to co-present with me tonight to give insight into how we handle snow and ice control. And as Patrick mentioned, we are expecting a little bit of snow possibly on Wednesday. So, the four-letter S-word, snow, is in our vocabulary already. So, just a quick overview, we're going to talk about our policies, how we set priorities within the city. And we do that by storm classifications. So, each storm is a little bit different, depending on the year, depending on the temperatures outside, as well as the temperatures of the pavement. And so, all of those factors go into how we respond to each of those storm events, what types of resources we deploy, and how we serve the public in terms of our response to each of those different events. We'll touch on training, public communication, and finally, again, sidewalk clearing and support from our community service officers for that. So, overall, this our snow and ice policy, we do have a written snow and ice policy. And our goal is really primarily focused on, first, keeping roads in reasonably safe condition so that primarily we can have access for emergency vehicles. So, if there is an incident either at a home or a business, that those emergency vehicles can access that. Then, we're also focused on safety of the traveling public, as well as making sure that we're communicating with our citizens, as well as those driving through and through our community. And again, focusing on our efficient use of resources, spreading those because they are limited, and making sure that we respond in an appropriate way and being flexible when we need to debate based on the event that we're facing. We did hand out a hard map to each of you. This has just recently been updated. This shows our street priorities. So, red is the and then we have a little bit of a close-up here, but reds are our priority ones. So, those are going to be the more well-traveled routes with the higher volumes on them. Yellow are slightly less volume, but still connecting and collector streets within a sub-neighborhood. And then, you can see there, a few of the green ones in and around the community are primarily hilly streets or streets near schools that we want to make sure get treated appropriately in those higher level events. And then, the blue are the snow routes. So, I'll go to the next slide just to jump ahead. But when we do have a storm where there's predicted to be ten or more inches, we will go down each and every street typically between those between December first and March first, because again, those are it's colder, there's not as strong of a sun angle that's coming out to assist in melting that in the next couple of days. So, we want to make sure that there's at least one passable lane down the center of the street. We did that last year, if you recall, in that very large snow event. It was March fifteenth and sixteenth. So, it's a little bit past our dates, but we knew that we were experiencing a really big storm. And it was one of those heavy, wet snows. So, it was a lot of tree branches down, a lot of power outages, as you may remember. And so, we did make the call, and we think that was the right call, to go out and respond accordingly, even though it was after that March first date. But as you can see there, it really is dependent on how long the storm's going to last and how many inches we're predicted to receive is how we're going about prioritizing those types of streets. And this just gives some general data. So, again, each year is can be different. And even though we achieve probably roughly the same same number of the light blue there shows total miles plowed, you can see that goes up and down, which I think was interesting in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, even though we had less snow, the green bar, we had a lot more miles plowed because we were going that we had more events for a higher level of snowfalls. All right. I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having me today and the rest of us that are here. So, basically, once she's when we deploy, we have thirteen Public Works staff. We're going to deploy three, four-person, eight-hour shifts. We try and keep to the eight-hour shifts just for whether a storm goes further than twenty-four hours for tiredness or or time in on the road. There are times with that last press storm, guys will jump on another extra four hours or on the front or back, depending on where the storm is at during that day. So, we plan according with that. Each storm event is overseen by myself and Maria. We will typically plan ahead. If we know a storm's coming in overnight, we typically will try and have someone oversee the storm on-site and travel the city overnight just for the roads and and anything where we can get get the guys in within forty-five minutes to a half hour if the snow starts to accumulate. So, we do have five plow trucks, a front-end loader, and then one motor grader. The motor grader, we typically bring out if we have very, very icy conditions, so we can break that ice up. The average salt we use is about fourteen thousand tons a year. We just got a hundred and twenty-five tons delivered today. So, the timing couldn't be any better if it does get icy on on Wednesday night. We do use approximately about, depending on the coldness with the mag chloride. So, we don't have to put down a mag chloride because of the severity of the storm or how cold the storm is at night. We try and avoid using that as much. But we use last year, we used about seventeen thousand gallons of mag chloride. The year before, I know just from being on the road, we had some severe cold weather even last year, too. So, we try and we we try and stay under two-hundred-and-fifty pounds of salt and mag chloride a year per lane mile. And on an average, last year, we were at about two-hundred-and-twenty. So, we were under that average, which is good. And we're still getting roads clear for people on the road to keep it safe.
Each of our drivers, too, is required just because of the size of the plow vehicles and the heavy equipment, are required to have a commercial driver's license. So, that sets them apart from.
Yeah. And then, it's kind of nice. Every year, we actually get up into Love, Duty and Continued Education for best practices, over-road safety. There's tons of classes that those guys get into for best operating practices. And like Maria said, we are not it's not a small vehicle we're in. So, we want to stay as safe as possible and understand the vehicles that we're traveling in. So, they put us through a pretty rigorous obstacle course, very tight confines. As you know, on the east side, in the hills, we do get some areas that are pretty tight with both cars on the side of the hills, and it does get icy there. So, it's good to know these guys can get into tight spaces, whether it's be backing up almost in any of that areas, especially if it's icy. Some of those hills, they can't get up. They're going to have to go back down without hitting anything on the side. So, it's good that we do the Continued Education yearly. We do already right now are with the new members going through the vehicles to understand where the operating, everything that we need to operate within the vehicle, as well as paying attention to the road, because there's quite a bit of technology that's inside the vehicle that we have to maintain, as well as keeping our eye on the road. So, we do that. We've we've been deploying the guys out to do the priority routes, to understand the routes. And each storm, depending on where it's at, we will maneuver our guys accordingly. So, even though we're on the priorities of it's snowing heavier on the east side, we will deploy more vehicles on that east side to prioritize where the snow is falling. So, we're in constant communication with everybody, which is kind of nice. But there the staff is great in knowing how to stay safe, but continue to stay on the road. So, that's one of the the better things that we've been able to do. So that's one of the better things that we've been able to do moving forward, which is best for all of us, with the size of vehicles we're on.
And then last year, we showed you our new Plow Ops web app. So this has been really helpful in communicating with the public in terms of where our plows are, that is on a 30-minute delay, just so people know where it's coming, but that they're not necessarily know exactly where each of the vehicles are for safety reasons. But it gives a really nice picture, really quick communication to the public of whether or how long ago their particular street near their houses have been plowed. So that's been working well for us. We're looking at deploying that again this year and trying to use that to even greater degree in some areas, other areas within Public Works.
I think Maria threw that picture up there, because I don't know if you recognize that elf there. That's me.
He looks familiar. Oh, yes. So we also do outreach and education with the students, as you see here. This was last year. Yeah, Mike did a great job of really getting the kids excited, hopped, yeah, through the crosswalk, but just really get them excited. And you can see there, just the size of the vehicle, you know, in relation, those are second graders, I think. And really just getting them interested in everything that we do and making sure that they say "safe," "safe" as well. All right. And then, this is a great slide, I use this almost every year. So this is the saga, the dilemma that we face. So we come along in the street or clearing the snow, and then the homeowners are clearing it right back out into the street. The only difference maybe in Wheat Ridge is that our sidewalk is right at the curb, so there's not even that little like buffer area in there between us to store some of the snow. But this is an ongoing issue, you know, the clearing, we heard it last year, we continue to hear it, and our community service officers are typically the ones that receive those calls, and they will react and respond to those, to start with typically a warning, and then that elevates as time goes by. If that continues to be an issue where they don't just ignore that warning, or if there's a condition that is particularly severe, then they will escalate that to a ticket. But Chief is here to talk to that a little bit more. We do also have some walks that are adjacent to, like Parks or the Rec Center, that the Parks Division clears on their own. And then all of our bus stops are actually cleared by a city contractor, who's also the one that maintains or empties the trash on a regular basis. So at least within the about five feet of the bus benches, we are clearing that as well through a contractor. So with that, happy to answer any questions or any feedback. Thank you.
Questions of Council? I don't see any unless, if you're joining us online and have a question, I can't see you, but if you want to speak up, Councilor Voltein or Councilor Larson. But I don't hear any questions, so thank you. Rachel's got her hand up, okay?
I disconnected.
Oh, you're doing good.
I'm assuming you guys cannot hear me.
Actually, we can hear you and see you now.
Okay, great. Thank you. So first of all, just, I want to recognize that Wheat Ridge just does an outstanding job of snow removal. It's always obvious when I cross the city line out of Wheat Ridge to neighboring communities during a snowstorm. It's just our streets are exceptionally well-plowed, so thank you, Maria, and to all of your crew for all of that good work. I just, I wanted to clarify the trails clearing. So it's my understanding from this and from your comments a few minutes ago that the city maintains, does snow removal operations for trails within the parks and adjacent to city properties, but in my understanding that it's not doing snow removal procedures on our multi-use trails that are alongside our corridors, like the Kipling Street Trail and the soon-to-come online Wadsworth multi-use trail.
Yeah, the Parks Department does on the major trails, as you just mentioned. So Kipling Trail from 38th to Discovery Park, and then they will be responsible for the new trail on Wadsworth as well.
Okay, great. It wasn't clear from the packet or the comments, and I am very excited to hear that. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I would like to recognize the Public Works folks on their performance measures that was included in our packet, the reduce the impact of extreme weather events on public safety, and the Public Works folks have met their performance measures every year for the last four years. I think that's incredible. The other thing is, basically, everybody who lives on a street thinks that their street should be plowed. I mean, that's, you know, it just goes without saying. And rather than get into that whole discussion, because I think you guys have done a very good job of sort of explaining which streets are included, why certain streets are, why certain streets are not. The only question I have in terms of specifics is Ridge Avenue up north, and it looks like when the plows pass up, I believe it's maybe Reed or, they stop plowing when Ridge runs through Arvada and then pick up the plow again on the other side of that space where Haskins Station is. Is there some way we might talk to the folks in Arvada about, maybe, you know, we'll continue doing this, because it seems kind of inefficient to have the folks on the Arvada snow plows come in and just do that section when our plows are on Ridge over by Ward Road, and they could just continue all the way to Miller.
So Councilor Larson, we actually, I think it was like the last two years, because of that new bill, there was a little bit of a problematic with plowing in there because the roads weren't officially done. But we have, I've actually spoke to a couple of people in Arvada as well. It's kind of like how we have 32nd with Lakewood, where we go ahead and just do it just because that's our road, pretty much when it comes down to a 32nd Avenue from Youngfield all the way to Sheridan. So we're going to do from Miller all the way through to Ward Road from Ridge, because usually they have that Rob Reed Court or Quay Court or Queen Court in that corridor, but that since then has been, Kerbin Gutter is in there as well. So we're going to go ahead and go from Miller. It doesn't reflect it on here, but we typically, going forward with now the road is done, we're going to go from Miller to Ward on Ridge.
Great. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Weaver.
I just would like to acknowledge, as a rodeo fan, I think I did see that those awards were belt buckles, and that's very impressive, so I'm a little jealous. That's very cool.
We were one question away from getting first place this year, so we were not, you didn't leave without leaving a few adjectives.
So the snow's coming, and you're buttering up the snowplow guys? Okay. All right. Councilor Rome.
Thank you, and thank you for this, Maria. One question I did have that comes up every year, so is there some type of solution between the conflict of the sidewalk plow? I mean, if we just say like 38th through 44th, I know those are the most problematic because you have street sidewalk fence.
Yeah, we really do. It might not feel like it all the time, but we really do try and scooch away from the curb and go slow, so that we use probably a little bit of the on-street lane, as well as a little bit of the sidewalk for that snow storage. Mike can speak to that probably a little bit better, but we really do just try and, if we keep it slow, we usually can try and keep it at least in a narrower windrow along the edge of the curb and a little bit up in the sidewalk.
Yeah, all of us are basically trained to not throw it into the sidewalk. Some days, it's just inevitable when it is wet, because even at seven miles an hour, that snow's going 12 to 15 feet in the other direction. So it gets a little difficult in those aspects, but we do want to have some of the bike lane clear, and there are areas where the kerbin gutter and the bike lane kind of gets a little bit tough for us when we do have accumulations of six to eight inches, that there's just nowhere for it to go. So we either have to kind of have that happy medium, where we're still getting the road clear, making it safe for emergency vehicles, still allowing maybe a little bit of bike lane to be open, not fully open, but also not getting it onto the curb after someone's going through. So the times where it gets a little bit difficult for us is when we get the accumulation, it just has nowhere to go. So we start losing bike lanes, and then we hear from the bikers, but it's one of those things, we just got to have that happy medium. And most of us that have been around for a while know where the troublesome corridors are, so we pay much more attention to that. And obviously, Jim, I've been one of the ones that's put some stow on the 32nd. I had to call Jim and let him know. So we're very aware of the areas, which we try and just very carefully stay away from it, but it is a problem. There's some areas we just can't when it gets accumulation.
Is there ever a consideration for, not 44th, but like 38th, where there's a center lane, to temporarily pile some of that in the center lane?
We do. When we, like that last storm, we will leave that center, we'll leave that center lane open until we have control, basically, of where we have, the roads are open, then we'll go back out and clear that center line. So that's why a lot of times you'll see 32nd and 38th, where we'll leave that center line, or even on Youngfield, we'll leave that center line full of snow. And as long as we have a passable lane, one or two, that's how we keep that, and then we'll go back later in the storm and get that middle. So it's, basically, it's given some time to be cars on it and tracks, but that's why we'll leave that open. That's usually not good, because at night, if we had it in the middle of the road, that turns, the water, if it's melting in the day at night, it turns to a sheet of ice. If we get an inch or so of ice, then that just becomes problematic for us. But typically, we try not to do that, just because overnight it will freeze.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Have we ever been in a situation where we needed to have an area to store snow, when it was, we had a lot of low temperatures for a long time, and it wouldn't melt?
I think in the past, we've used like either Anderson or one of the Parks areas. The problem is, is then you kind of have this accumulated, all the gunk that's in there in a area where then it's going to run off into Clear Creek, so we're killing the grass potentially. Or the parking lots are still being used even during the wintertime for events or people parking to go into the park. So we have done that kind of in emergency situations, but we don't do it on a regular basis to pick up and haul the snow.
Thank you for that. I was curious. The other thing I wanted to touch on, I was reading through in the packet, there's a bit about staffing levels and not being, there's two positions currently still open, and you're obviously required to have a CDL. I just hate that no one's able to take vacation. Is there, I'm sure that's something that you're talking about every year, but any new realizations on that or thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's, again, Mike's been here for six years, and really, I think it's been a constant issue. We try and, you know, everybody's excited at the beginning of the year, you know, right now, it's like, yay, let's go. By March, April, it's getting really exhausting. And so, yeah, we'd like to have a little bit more, have some more staff, have some redundancy, so people can go on vacation or get sick. We have a lot of people come in sick, unfortunately. Or then, you know, the supervisor is taking a shift, or even some of our fleet staff have plowed in the past as well. So it's just an ongoing issue, but, yeah, we try and keep the morale up and keep people excited as much as we can. Anything else?
Well, I appreciate it. Every time I hear anything about anything having to do with our public works, I'm just blown away. Y'all are an amazing team, so thank you so much. I'm glad that we're...
Director DeAndrea, you guys do a great job. Thank you for your report. We seem to be building more sidewalks and more bicycle lanes. Does the equipment that we have match what we're building? Are we going to have to look at specialized equipment to help us maintain these other facilities?
We did get an extra plow, another, a new additional plow. We just received that within the last few months here. So that was to address some of the Clear Creek area, where we've added a lot of lane miles. Generally, I think that what we do with bike lanes is we go out after the storm event is over and try and clear those out as best as possible, where we're not throwing it back up in the sidewalk, but areas like 32nd Avenue, where we have kind of a shoulder area where we can clear the bike lanes, we try and do that. The, probably the area where we're still to come, still teasing for the next presentation here, is those continuous flow intersections. So that is our responsibility, even on Wadsworth, for us to plow that, and we're not sure, just given the configuration of those lanes, how we're going to go about removing the snow, because most likely, it's going to have to be picked up and hauled away. There's very little storage in the medians, you know, they're built up purposely to not accept snow, very little shoulder area, and there's all kinds of plants and landscaping, so it's most likely going to be something pushing forward or picking it up and putting it, kind of throwing it back over you into a truck of some sort. So we did apply for a congressionally-directed spending grant for that. We were not successful, and so we probably have another winter here to get through before those are completely built, so we're still continuing to work on that.
Okay. So we might, you know, also need to have some dump trucks or other conveyances that'll be able to haul those away?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions on this snow, you know, kind of getting ready for it, you know, you sort of get a little itch? I'm hoping it stays mostly in the mountains, quite frankly. All right. Thank you very much. Mike, we appreciate you having us with us and for the work you do out on the streets. So thanks so much. We will now go to, let's see, item number two on our study session. This is an update on the Wadsworth Improvement Project.
Could we get a picture of the close-up of the belt buckle on the Public Works page? Okay, all right. I just, I think that's really cool.
And she's pulling this up. Yeah, we're just excited to give you a quick update on the Wadsworth Improvement Project, and we are celebrating a 75% completion mark, so I won't steal Maria's thunder on that, but that's where we're at, and up, there it is. So it's moving along very quickly as we're having some good weather, so I'll let Maria give you the update.
Yeah, so just a quick check-in here. Again, I think we're celebrating a really great milestone of 75% completion, and that's based on actual monies expended to the contractor out of the whole construction contract, but really, they've been making hay, or I should say, making concrete this whole summer. So they have been going like crazy, and it's a really good thing. So we've seen a lot of progress, and hopefully, the community is seeing that as well, and we're hoping that that's going to translate into some potentially, hopefully, a smoother commute through that, especially as you're going north and south on Wadsworth, as well as going across at some of those major intersections. So just as a reminder, we originally bid this back in August of 2021, and because there wasn't enough funding at the time, we went from I-70 all the way down to just south of 41st Avenue with some additional work to be done south of there to 35th Avenue, including at that time, a new signal, not the CFI, at 38th Avenue. Once we got that additional congressional-directed spending, we were able to add on that work, what we called also Phase Two. That was approved by City Council back in February of 2023, and that added the CFI at 38th Avenue, as well as those additional three lanes all the way down to 35th. And so that was the original intent of the overall project, what was originally designed and contemplated through the environmental assessment process. So we're really building what was originally set out to achieve and looking forward to completion here. Right now, all of the concrete paving is complete. That just goes through that, how we added that work. And right now, our timeframe, when we added that work, our timeframe for completion is spring of 2026. That's always what we've advertised. That's always what we've advertised. And where we are right now is just all the concrete paving, both northbound and southbound lanes are generally complete. There's a little bit more to do. I saw them prepping today. I'm guessing they're probably going to get in another pour tomorrow before the weather comes on Wednesday. So only a high of 39 on Wednesday. But as soon as they can get the majority of that pavement done, then the hope is that they can dismantle that temporary batch concrete plant up at the southwest quadrant of Wadsworth and I-70. So Concrete Works set that up so that they could have quick and easy access to concrete, make their own and bring it onto the job. So just a couple of great drone shots here. These were taken by Steve Art, so with his drone. But you can see that huge retaining wall. So we're at about just south of I-70, looking southbound. That's on the west side, very significant retaining wall there with that home up on the north. And you can see that inside lane is already paved and they're getting ready to pave that second southbound lane where the gentleman right, kind of in the center of the picture are standing. These were taken probably about, oh, probably six weeks ago now. So even since the, these photos have been taken, there's been significant progress. Other way, just another shot there looking further south. This is the, now we're looking northbound at the intersection of 44th Avenue. So the great thing here is that both of those dual turn lanes on 44th are open. So that's helped streamline some of the traffic on 44th during the daytime, as well as during the overnight hours. And you can still see here in the photo, as you come southbound, that kind of black strip. So that was the piece of concrete that they had to leave. So when they're flipping traffic back and forth, there's still little remnants here and there that still need to be paved. So again, their goal is to try and get that done yet this year if possible. Then this is the intersection looking northbound at 38th. So 7 and 11 is kind of in the southeast corner here. And you can see again, most of the paving is complete on the east side where we did that large diversion and still yet to come on the west side. And right in front of the commons area right there, there's still paving. And then this is just a little bit further south, looking northbound. You can see Raising Canes is on, and Five Guys is off to the left. And this is that same view, just looking south. And you can see there, kind of right in the middle of the picture, is that, that white truck. This is, you can see that little curve, that's the beginning of that continuous flow intersection. The only thing is that that will be coming from the northbound. This is where they would cross over and would be in this lane as they approach the intersection of 38th Avenue. So obviously, before we put the CFIs in place, we'll be doing a very large education effort to tell people how to, how to drive those. But really, if you have driven one in the past, or there's one out in Eagle, the one up on, in US 36 and McCaslin is very similar. So once you go through them, it's like, oh, that was no big deal. So I think it's just getting people over that initial reluctance to try it and then it'll be fine. So again, making great progress out here. Here on the left-hand side of the picture, you can see the, the post for the sound wall that's going to go up. That'll probably be another six to eight weeks out. They're making the panels right now. They're actually casting those. So they'll bring those out and attach them to the wall. Then the public art will go on top of that, as well as a couple other locations throughout the corridor. So really, the remaining work that we have will consist of in, primarily in 2025, will consist of those median, completing the medians, completing that sound wall, as well as installing the permanent traffic signals. And then all of the landscaping and irrigation. And then finally, the, probably the last step would be those continuous flow intersections at the very end and then switching traffic over to that permanent configuration. So again, this just gives a very quick summary, a high level summary, where we started with that original contract amount in August of 21. We added the, the additional work or Phase Two for our total contract to date is right just over 53 million. And our work completed to date is 41.6 and that equates out to about 78% actually. So, but 75 is a nice rounder number. And then I think I've touched on all the remaining work here that we have to do. And so right now, again, we'll get through the winter, we'll see how bad the winter is. But Concrete Works feels that, you know, they're really hoping that they can wrap things up in 2025, would be their goal. And again, it'll be somewhat dependent on the weather, how much they can get done over the winter months. And hopefully in the spring, we can reassess that and maybe move that completion date up a little bit earlier than what we've currently advertised. All right. And then just to touch on a couple of follow-up items that we've talked about in the past. Oh, we're coming in at different things. So I know Councilmember Haltine has asked about opening up that multi-use trail on the east side. You know, it generally is complete, so we can certainly do that. It would start the warranty period, but we feel comfortable. Concrete Works has actually been backfilling those areas so that people don't just fall off the edge of the, of the trail and turn their ankle. So we could certainly do that if we wanted to. However, it would be a matter of snow removal during this winter. At this time, Parks was not set up to add that to their contract or do that within their group. But, you know, for the days where it's not snowing or it's melted off, we could certainly open up the trail for use by the public. Then drip versus spray irrigation. I know Councilmember Olm, you had brought this up in the past. We had discussed this quite a bit with our park staff, who's going to ultimately maintain that, as well as the landscapers and our landscape design team. And so we have decided to retain the spray irrigation, just for a variety of ease of repair, those types of things, that it was already contracted out. So we would be doing a pretty large change at this point in the contract. And so they really were set up to do the spray versus the drip. However, we have put into the contract wind sensors so that we can limit that overspray and really if there is a rain event that we're not irrigating at the same time as we're receiving irrigation from the sky. And then finally, pedestrian access north of 44th Avenue. Again, I think Councilmember Haltine had brought this up. So currently, there is no pedestrian crossing north of 44th Avenue. So anybody living on either side of, of Wadsworth, north of 44th, would have to come down to 44th to make that crossing. So we do have the ability to go back. I know we have a history, which is one of the reasons for doing this project, of some pedestrian and bicycle accidents along Wadsworth. So we could go back to City, CDOT and ask for an additional consideration to add pedestrian access. That would be modifying the design. So it probably would be a further out project in the future that we'd still have to get approval from them. But we could consider that if there was a desire on the part of council to do so. But right now, as I mentioned, there's no access currently in the plans. So with that, our next steps, again, because Concrete Works has done so well and, and really doing a lot of work, good work this summer, we may need, we may be back in front of you at a city council meeting, moving some of our funds from 2025 to 2024 to just ensure we have enough money in the budget to pay them through the rest of the year. And then we may also be coming back. We shouldn't have to modify the contract for AECOM, but we will do their construction management contract for all of 2025 as well. And then HDR, we have a small contract with them for design support as we finish up construction. So our hope is that, again, most of the work will be wrapped up in 2025 with just some tail over into 2026, which will limit our additional expenses. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have and stand ready to answer those. Thank you.
Questions on Wadsworth?
Counselor Olm. Thank you, Mayor. When the CFI, I guess, is ready to be used, are you, are the speeds going to be what they should be? Or is there going to be a temporary reduction to, for people? I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take people to figure out how those, how those work.
I'm sorry, the speeds?
Yeah, the speeds, yeah.
It, it's only a single lane, so they will, they should feel very constricted in there of being able to probably go no more than 25 to 30 miles per hour. Now, as soon as I say that, somebody's going to challenge that and go like 50. But yeah, the intent would be is that they, they're purposely made slow because you're basically in a long left turn lane as you're approaching the intersection. And the signals will help guide you through that. And, and the traffic, there'll be adequate enough traffic to keep that at a reasonable pace, is the thought.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And the first question I have is, Maria, can you tell me, you did mention the concrete batch plant over here at Carr and the I-70, that that would be kind of wrapping up operations there? Can you tell me when that'll happen?
Yeah, they're hoping probably after the first of the year to dismantle that.
And, and basically all of the operations, the hauling of, of rock and dirt and whatnot that, that takes place over there, all of that will end at the same time?
They'll, they'll probably have to keep the yard for some material storage, you know, especially for like the landscaping materials, any of the boulders, anything associated with, with the irrigation and landscaping. But for the most part, all of the underground work is done. So any of the pipes, everything like that has already been completed. So they're real, and, and a lot of them park down there too, just the employees will park down there. So there will be some presence down there, just that the batch plan itself will be removed.
Well, I, I can tell you, my, my neighbors will be overjoyed to hear that because for the past three years, we've had from seven o'clock in the morning till later in the afternoon, probably as many as, as 35 dump trucks an hour going up and down the front of the road. So they will not be missed. I do have a question though, on, on page two of your, of your, your report, the first item, first bullet item halfway down, removal and disposal of materials from an unidentified dump site? Should we call the archaeologists?
It wasn't anything interesting that we, that was uncovered. That was up at the very north end of the job, where we actually built a stormwater detention pond. So just off to the, and kind of down the hillways. If you go northbound on Wads and get, go eastbound on I-70, you're going on that existing ramp. It's down in that kind of off to the side onto there. And we think it was like an old building or something. And then instead of removing the building and building materials, they basically collapsed it into the basement. And so we found a lot of rubble, a lot of brick, concrete, not necessarily anything hazardous, but just old, an old building. That was unidentified before the project.
Right. Nothing of, of any, any value?
No, not that was uncovered, no. But we're always, and because it is a CDOT job, we are required to bring out archaeologists before we do that. So they were onsite to evaluate that and, and make sure that the site had no historical value.
And then tell me about the asbestos abatement?
Yeah, so that was another thing that we uncovered. Unfortunately, Wadsworth is a very old road. It's probably been rebuilt multiple times. And in the past, things are left in the ground instead of removing them. So again, we, we discovered some pipes that had asbestos associated with them, as well as some other building materials that had to be disposed of in the proper way. So that added, it was an unknown cost that added to the project.
And then Maria, finally, on page three, you note that since the last contract amendment, there has been additional work identified that connects this project with the water sanitation districts. Can you tell us just a little bit about that?
Sure. Yeah. So I think this was an example of a great partnership with both Wheat Ridge Water District and the Wheat Ridge Sanitation District, where they upgraded all of their facilities as, as part of this project. So even though Concrete Works did the work through the city's project, Wheat Ridge Sanitation and Water is reimbursing the city for all of that work. So when we extended from the original limits at about 41st Avenue down to 35th, they wanted to continue that, the work that they had originally planned. And so we increased both of their contracts, or the contract with Concrete Works by the additional work for both the sanitation and water.
So any, any of the work that done, that is done, that provides a, a infrastructure support for the water district and the sanitation district will be reimbursed to the city? Is that correct?
We're, we're pretty much caught up. We are expecting, all of the work for the water district is done. So we're hoping to get them their final reimbursement request before the end of the year. And we're just wrapping up a couple of things with the sanitation district, which I know the mayor has asked about in the past as well. But all the work is done for the sanitation district and we're, we will also get them their final invoice or reimbursement request probably within the next month.
That's great. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Haltine.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maria, for the update. It's always good to actually take a look at the big picture after, you know, always getting it as you're driving down and not exactly sure what's going on. I know, we all know that this project's having a huge impact on district to neighbors and businesses. So providing helpful and timely information like this to help us understand where the project is and where it's projected to go is, is appreciated. And, and hopefully we, between the snow removal and this construction project, I am hoping for a mild winter. I did want to follow up on your comments about the pedestrian crossing opportunities north of 44th. At some point in the project, there had been discussion about including a phased pedestrian crossing at the, the CFI holding spot, similar to what's seen south of 38th. And I'm, or I'm sorry, I can't remember where it is. But I know that we've got phased pedestrian crossings at the holding zones in other parts of the project. And, and I'm just wondering if you could share with me, based on your comments, what would be the sequencing for evaluating adding additional pedestrian crossing? My concern is that people are going to be attempting to cross that road without adequate controlled pedestrian crossing. And I, it's just, it's going to be incredibly dangerous. And, you know, as long as I've lived here, I've seen people hopping Frogger style across Wadsworth. It's incredibly dangerous and without given safe places to go. I'm just really worried that we're, we're going to be in a situation where we're going to be having continued crash data of drivers and pedestrians. So could you just explain a little bit more about what the process would be to evaluate that?
Certainly. Yeah. And I, I have to apologize. So I think you may have been under the understanding in the public and the rest of the council may have been too, that there was a planned crossing north of 44th. So according to our, the project manager who was on the job previously, I, that was the intent. And then it was removed from the project because, or from the design, because there wasn't adequate enough room in the median to allow for like a two-stage crossing. So the one down, as you mentioned, south, south of 38th Avenue, you'll be able to cross to the median, stop there for the next light so that you don't have to cross the entire width all in one traffic flow. Because there wasn't adequate enough median space for that storage of pedestrians, it was removed from the project. So I apologize that that was never communicated back adequately. So now our options are, is to take this data back to, to CDOT to consider that. So even though there might not be the opportunity to stage people in the median, as you said, I think we have the, we can show some predictions of crossings that, you know, people are still going to try. So wouldn't it be better to at least then cross the entire road on a signalized type of pedestrian signal rather than having nothing up there? So that would be our angle, is how we would approach that. And we can do some predictions on the number of people who might be crossing at that location to bolster our case for that. So.
Okay, I appreciate.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah. So we, it would just be a request through CDOT's Traffic Division to try and get, allow something for that. And then doing the associated infrastructure, which again, would have to be in the future at some date.
Thanks for that explanation. You know, I, I would like us to move forward with figuring out. You know, I, I would like us to move forward with figuring out what that option looks like and, and doing the request through the Region One Traffic Engineer, just because it is a really long haul without a controlled pedestrian access. And we've got transit stops on both sides, businesses, parks. Technically, Applebacher Park is the closest park to the neighbors who live on the west side. So if we could at least move forward with doing the evaluation in terms of using those predictive warrants, that would be really good. And then as we learn more information, we can make decisions along the way about where that falls in our prioritization.
Certainly, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Maria, thank you very much. Appreciate your update. Looks like we got a great project coming along. Very happy to see this one turn, turn over next year, so. Very good, all right. We will, staff reports, Mr. Goff?
Nothing else, staff, nothing, anybody, anybody?
Going once, nothing else?
Going once, going twice, okay. Elected officials, anybody, anybody didn't get all their, all their sayings done? Okay, thank you. Just looking at the calendar, we will not be in session here next week because the, our hall, City Hall will be used for a voting, voting place. And I hope everybody has registered or will register and vote in this election coming up on the 11th. We are not here also because we are taking Veterans Day off. So we want to honor all of our veterans for the value that they give us. And so we will be back here on November the 18th at a study session, is what I've got on my calendar. Is that looking right?
That is correct.
Okay, so thank you all for joining us tonight. If there's no more, no more business come before us, we will stand adjourned. We will have Halloween coming up this week. I hope everybody drives slowly and safely through our city. Don't get scared, but there's a lot of spooks out there. So anyway, thank you all. We will stand adjourned.